Good evening. At seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Commissioner Batty?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Keen?
Here.
Commissioner Brink?
Here.
Commissioner Cabal?
Here.
And Chair Gerard?
Here. We ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice as its goal.
Let the games begin. Before I ask for a motion for the approved agenda, you'll notice there is no MXR-1 discussion for this evening. And the reason for that is the amount of work that staff needed to do on the other agenda items this evening. So at a later date, we'll resume that discussion. But that's why... We also sent them with the laundry list of information we were looking for. So we'll have that... We'll continue that discussion at a later date. So based... So, having said that, Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
A motion, I have a second.
Second, sir.
I have a motion and a second. It's an undevatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from October 27, 2021.
So move.
The motion, I have a second? Second. I have a motion and a discussion. And a second, any discussion on the motion? Corrections to the minutes, et cetera? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Sorry, I mean abstained from the last one.
So I have Commissioner abstentions. Commissioner Brink and Commissioner Miller.
Batty.
And Commissioner Batty. Thank you.
They weren't here to join us for the last meeting's fun.
That was a fun one. You wouldn't have wanted me here.
Next item on the agenda is 9282 Jewel Lane North. A variance to the impervious surface maximum application. There is a public hearing. I'll explain how that works when we get to that part of the meeting. And we're going to consider this variance application. I believe, Nathan, you will be presenting. Would you introduce our guest this evening before you start?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Our guest this evening is... Her name is Franny Nielsen. She's a planner with Bolden &amp; May. She's helping to provide some planning services as my colleague here with day-to-day planning, operations, billing permits, inquiries from residents, things of that nature, so...
So, as Nathan said, I'm Franny, and I'm happy to be here. Nice to meet you all.
Welcome. All yours, Nathan.
Thank you, Chair Gerard. So, this is a variance application, a variance request, rather, for the property at 9282 Jewel Lane in the city. The applicants are Pat Heverland and Tanya Otten. I hope I said your names correctly. The owner, Patricia Lothenback, does not live at this address currently. And the applicants have a signed purchase agreement as their interest in the property. They are applying for variance to the Shoreland Overlay Impervious Surface Maximum. This zoning for this parcel is single-family, as are many of the parcels along Forest Lake. The future land use designation is low-density residential. So specifically, the request is for... And I'm going to correct. The staff report says 12.5%, but it's actually 7.5% over the allowable impervious. And I'll touch on that in a minute, as to why that is an important distinction. So, as background, the applicants are looking to purchase this property and to live there. And to do so, they'd like to request the ability to completely demolish a dilapidated house that currently is on this site and to rebuild a newer, more modern, single-family home. So the work that's proposed on this site would include the demolition of the existing home shed and the detached garage, the removal of some existing bituminous driveway that runs between the private drive and the existing garage, and construction... And constructing a new, single-family home with an attached garage. I do have on the screen here in a second, you will see the certificate of survey which shows the existing conditions and the proposed conditions. So while that is put up on the screen here... Looks like we're here now. And I can zoom in in a moment here. But I'm just going to go over kind of an overview of the impervious, the difference between existing and proposed. So, in total, this site has square feet of 7,950. That is just about half of what the minimum lot size is for this area, which is 15,000. So currently, there are 3,266 square feet of impervious surface on this site.
What was that?
So, the impervious surface that's existing, 3,266 square feet. And the proposed impervious area would be 2,983. So in the zoning code, in the Shoreland Overlay District, there is a provision that allows for lots that are smaller than the minimum lot size to be at 30% of their overall impervious... Sorry. They have to have... They're allowed to have an impervious surface area of 30% of the overall square feet on the property. So, that would put this property at an allowable square feet of 2,358. So the difference between what is permitted on the property and what is proposed is 625 square feet. And that would be 7.5%. So there is a breakdown in the staff report, and I'm happy to take a moment here to answer any questions on the review.
Questions for Nathan?
Eddie? So the 12.5% just... Is that what includes... Is that the number that includes this additional drive? Or where did that number come from?
Yeah, so the 12.5% was based on the imperv... There's actually... This... The... Okay, so, let me back up. In this... In the Shoreland Overlay District, you're allowed to have only 25% of your property be impervious, right? In the Shoreland Overlay District, there is a specific provision that allows sites that are smaller. So the 12.5 number came from looking at it for 25% and it, in reality, should be looked at for 30.
When I was reading on this, it looked like there was something that you were excluding part of the driveway from the percentages because somebody else has to use it to get there.
Yeah, and that's a good question. Yeah, so, I'm going to zoom in here so you can see. And on the screen is showing the proposed conditions. So you can see on the westerly lot line, running from north to south is a private drive. This private drive serves the property to the north of this subject property with access. So if you were to exclude the portion of the private drive that serves the other property from your consideration, that would remove 332 square feet.
How would that change the percentages with it and without it for the impervious surface? If you look at the total property?
So... And this was just a kind of a hypothetical, just as something that might be of interest to the planning commission. All the impervious on this property would count against it. But to your... To answer your question, if you excluded the portion of the private drive that we estimate is on this parcel, it would be 33.8%.
Who owns the private drive? In other words, the property that the private drive is on, is that owned by the applicant and they are granting an easement?
That is typically... Yeah. There's an easement over the area.
So, since they own that, I would expect that that would be included
Yep.
in the amount of impervious surface calculation.
And that's how we look at it, yes.
And it is.
It is. That's how we're looking at it, yeah. It was just provided to you as a consideration, perhaps, or something you might want to know. Yep.
But because we're looking at a variance here, I just want to understand what you've figured in that 332 square feet there. And I'm assuming that it's the piece of the drive that is beyond the proposed connection into the new garage there, to the north of that.
That is exactly correct, yes.
So is that chunk?
Estimated, yeah.
Less than half of the length of that drive?
Yep. And so if you're following the cursor here on the screen, you can see kind of this area and then up to the top here. I can move on and briefly discuss the findings here. So, the applicant has identified the shape and size of the parcel as constituting a practical difficulty to building a new, more modern, single-family home. The applicant is proposing to demolish again those existing structures on-site, so... And build a use that's in line with the zoning for this area. This lot, I'm looking... I'm just kind of running through the findings here. And on criterion C, this lot predates current zoning restrictions for... And specifically, minimum lot size. It does not appear that, for criterion D, that this proposed plan would adversely impact the surrounding community. And lastly, to address criterion E, the request appears to meet the intent of the zoning ordinance to continue to permit single-family homes in this area. So, we did reach out to both the city engineer and the public works director who supplied comments that are in the staff report here. And they're also... In the proposed conditions of approval, if the planning commission chooses to do so, those comments are included in those conditions. Minnesota DNR was approached for comment on this, or they were... Provided this application for comment. They did not respond. Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed also did provide comments on this, effectively saying that it would require... The redevelopment of the site would require permitting and that they encourage the reduction of impervious area. So, that's the formal staff report and presentation that I have prepared for you. Staff, do supply some conditions of approval if the planning commission determines that it would like to approve this request. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Kevin? Nathan, do we have any idea of what's being... Going to be built here? I mean, have you seen any building plans? I mean, all I see is a foundation, basically, plan here. Looks to me it's roughly 18, 1900 square feet. I can't tell how big the garage is. Do we have any building plans that have been submitted yet?
I do have building plans. I believe they were supplied to us.
I have a paper copy with me, too, if you want to see it.
Yep. You'll have to give me a moment to bring those up. I'm going to unplug here for a second.
As you said, they're going to remove the entire structure that's there now and rebuild completely?
Yes, that's correct. They're going to remove all the structures that are currently on-site and construct a new, single-family home with an attached garage. And I'm not seeing in my files the home plans. The applicant has...
Do you know, is it a one level? Is it a two level?
I would advise you to have the applicant let you know about that.
Other questions?
That was mine.
Thank you. Well, would the applicant like to come up, say anything, and make any comments you have about your application?
I'm Pat. This is my wife, Tanya.
I'm sorry. I asked you to come up to the podium here, please.
Oh, to the podium, sorry. Hard to hear.
We're going to... Yeah, so am I. State your name and address for the public record, please.
My name is Pat Heverland, and we live in 3090 Cleveland Avenue, North Roseville, temporarily.
I believe the first question is if you had an idea what the house would look like?
Yep, I do. I have plans right here.
Karen, is the overhead working?
Overhead? Like overhead projector? Yeah. I don't think so.
It comes down?
I don't have any knowledge of overhead.
I don't know how that...
No knowledge of that.
Here comes the expert.
For that, I'm learning something. No clue? Didn't know?
You've got to learn something new every single day.
Oh, I do, Susan. Work for the city of Forest Lake.
I didn't know they moved the podium, the lecture.
How do we know where?
I think, Karen, you just pushed number four also.
Who, me? Really? Um... Oh, wait a second. Wait a second. See what happens? Bam! On her screen.
So I need to push the... You know, it might not work if you don't have a product in there. But I'll have it for video for the people watching.
No, no, it's on... No, it's this one. It's to go... It's podium to go down there.
I don't see the screen.
Well, I suppose we could have...
Is it on your screens up there? No?
Not yet.
I could have my wife come up and hold it up for you while I explain.
It's showing up live on YouTube, but I don't see it on any other screens, so...
Can you guys see it on your screens?
I don't have anything on our screen at all, though.
Yeah, that's... I don't know.
Well, let's...
Let's just go.
We'll move forward if you can describe what you're planning to build. And is that an extra copy of the plan?
Yeah, I can give you this copy.
And make it go in for the record?
So basically, it's going to be... It's going to be a two-story. This is not slab-on-grade construction, but for practical purposes, it's slab-on-grade. And... So it'll have a... It'll have a tuck under garage on the south side, and the house is 24 by 24... 24 by 26. The garage is 24 by 38. And then we have a 12-foot porch down here. So the whole building is basically 38 by 48. And it's a two-story.
So that's where you get your 1824 square feet.
Correct.
Footprint is actually, including the garage, is 1824.
I kept the roofline to a 412 to minimize the height for the people to our south. You know, I didn't... Trying to be as good a neighbor as I can by building a new house in their view. So... And we've met them. They're really nice people. And we also share the private drive and the dock access with them. So... But yeah, it's a pretty basic, pretty modest house for around Forest Lake.
Susan?
I don't see any patio or any deck. And you realize that... Go ahead.
So it's right...
I see that where you have the porch.
The porch.
Up, just the porch.
All right.
It's constructed as a deck. So it's a... I'm calling it a porch because I'm going to screen it in.
Okay.
So it's crawl space construction, right?
Correct. It'll have a two-foot crawl space.
It looks like you're up a couple feet out of the ground.
Yep. Right here, the house floor will be up... Sorry, I'm away from my microphone.
You're okay.
The house floor will be roughly two foot... Or three foot above the slab as a crawl space, which will be just slightly above grade.
You realize that with the variance, you're already above... You would... You... If it's granted, you would be above the permitted impervious surface. So you could not put, like, a concrete pad out to put a grill on or
Correct.
an additional deck? Nothing? No new sidewalks? No, et cetera?
Exactly. No, I understand. We're trying to fit within the setbacks. Because the current... The current property is not in the setbacks at all. And we're tearing out... He didn't mention it, but we are tearing out the current asphalt driveway, which is right up to the neighbor's property line, so...
So that little building that's right there on the east property line, is that... Whose is that?
Can you show the survey back up, Nathan?
It's shown on the survey, and it also shows up on the photo drive.
Yeah, we're working on that right now.
This thing shed?
I mean, it's not shown... See right there? Right there in the southeast corner?
That is on the neighbor-to-my-east.
So it's their property? So that's somebody else's building, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. There's a retaining wall along that east property line.
So that's down?
Yep.
And you're up?
Yeah.
No, he's down.
No, I'm down.
The neighbors.
They're up.
Behind him.
Yep.
Other questions to the applicant? Did you say the garage was 24 wide for the driveway and then 38-deep? Or is it 38 wide and 24-deep?
It's 24 wide and 38-deep.
And did you say that there's a crawl space? A cemented crawl space underneath your porch?
Not under the porch, under the house. The porch is... It's a... Call it a deck. The only reason I'm calling it a porch is because we're going to put the roof over it, and we're going to screen it in.
So it's going to be a wood-framed deck?
Wood-framed, probably have cedar decking. Yep.
Not concrete poured?
No. No. It'll probably have rock underneath it.
Okay.
Right. And I realize that counts against us and the impervious surface, but it's really not impervious. It's a deck with rock under it.
Yeah, but water heating... The roof of the deck doesn't go down into the dirt. So it is impervious.
Okay. By definition.
No. Decks are considered pervious.
This one has got a...
It's got a roof over it.
The roof is what makes it impervious.
Right.
That's what it says. It's got the roof, and so what falls on the roof doesn't go into the ground.
Correct. Other questions to the applicant? We won't make you hold that up anymore.
If you guys want to see it, I can leave.
If you could leave it for the public record, and then Nathan will have a copy of it.
It's preliminary, but it's pretty set in stone. I just... I'm the draft one, so I know it's not changing much.
Very good. This is a public hearing. And the way this is worked, we will ask anyone if they would like to speak to this application. We ask if you do, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Spend a couple minutes to give us your opinion of this application. Once we have heard everyone, we will close the public hearing, and we will bring it back to the... Excuse me, for the commission for a decision. So we will open the public hearing at 7:23, contrary to what the clock says. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Karen, do we have anyone online who would wish to speak to this issue?
I do not have anyone.
Any emails to read to us?
I have no emails.
I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:24 and bring it back for discussion and a decision by the planning commission. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Chair, my concern is that if we grant this variance, then we are agreeing to the criteria listed in A, B, C, D, and E. And A says that because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions unique to the parcel, a practical difficulty to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. And they're building new, so they can build the house and the garage any size they please. And there is a choice that they're making to make the house and the garage of sufficient size that they cannot... They are not meeting the 30% impervious surface area that is granted to them because of the small lot size. And so, to me, that's a concern. But I understand that... That my fellow commissioners...
Other points of view? Geneva?
Well, I actually am pretty familiar with this property. And if I was one of the neighbors of that property, I would love to see improvement. And I am a little bit concerned about the impervious. But I myself, I think I'd be more concerned about this property that is in disarray. It's unfunctional for just about anything at this point. And we have a resident who would like to move into our community, and they're trying to work with the city to come up with what the parties can live with. So, I'm listening to what you're saying about... Are we giving too much? But I'm not so sure we are. And I don't know if they're willing to make any concessions to size on their property. But I do think what they're doing is going to improve that whole area.
Other comments? Well, according to Dave Adams, does anybody see the sewer lines under the ground? I mean, they got the manhole at the end of the road, but his... His idea was, you know, to show us where that... Because it doesn't go through their property, through the neighbor's property. We didn't see that. Nathan?
Yeah, it's not... To answer that question, it's not on the survey, but it does run roughly under the private drive. Where?
Other questions? Comments? Discussion? Although, Susan, I would agree with you that I'd like to see it a little bit smaller. Think it's an improvement. They're going to have to improve their drainage. I think we're good, in my opinion.
I grant that anything would be an improvement. Something twice the size would be an improvement. But... But we are constrained and, you know, and see the plight of the landowners due... Is created by the landowner. He's building the house that... Of the size that he wishes to. I do understand that this is a freaking small lot, and I do understand that this is an improvement. But again, the decisions that we make have set precedents.
Yes, you do.
And we have said as a planning commission at our last meeting that when we are... When we have the opportunity to fix a variance, that we try to take that opportunity.
Dennis?
I mean, we saw a plan from a distance. I guess, just in looking at this thing, I, you know, I'm... I'm all for improving this property. I'm familiar with it and know that it definitely needs help. But that is a big garage. It's essentially... I mean, it's bordering on being a four-car garage, in all candor.
And, you know, we're talking about 7.5% square footage lines? Are we looking at... Is that a couple hundred square feet? We're looking at...
600.
Be 600.
625.
625. And if the driveway, if we kind of considered that driveway as...
Well, if you took the 300 off of it, it's 300. So it's about half of that. You know, I mean... I mean, I'm willing to grant the, you know, that extra drive as something that I'm at least not factoring in my own mind into what's happening here. And I realize that if you change the size of that garage, you have to change the whole plan, you know, so...
And they are improving the setbacks.
Yep, there's no... Wonder of what...
I will... I will... Yes, I will grant that.
We've just had this absolute endless lit... We've just had this absolute endless litany of short, lake shore property variances on setback till we're ad nauseam.
Other comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to grant the variance through the practical difficulty and allow, and I'm gonna change Nathan's wording to, to exceed the impervious to a surface maximum of a percentage, so it's thirty-two and a half percent? Or thirty-seven and a half percent total?
Yes.
So not to exceed thirty-seven and a half percent. It's just a quirk of me to know that their maximum number is, um, per the four staff recommendations. If a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion?
Discussion.
Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in fig, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Abstentions? I have, uh, what, four to two vote? No, wait a minute, I got seven people. Five to two vote? That is not my strong suit, I guess, tonight.
Well, I didn't, I didn't hear your vote, so I, you were right on the four.
Oh, I was, it was a yes, okay. So motion passes, five to two.
Good luck with it.
Luck with your project?
We wish you well on your project.
And you really don't have to stay for the rest unless you're really riveted.
I'll just, I'll give Nathan a copy of the plan.
That'd be great.
And just, just FYI, the mechanical room is in that garage space. It's not, and we don't have the ability to have a shed or anything, because then we'd be in the setbacks. Got to have a place to put the lawn tractor.
The lawn tractor.
You can put a lawn tractor for that size yard?
I have truly heard it all now. Item number seven is a Hidden Creek Concept Plan. This is a concept plan, uh, this is kind of the first step for a developer. They are looking for comments, it's a non-binding meeting and they will be back later. But we wanna steer them in the direction that we feel the city and the planning commission needs them to go. So with that, Nathan, you're presenting?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm going to bring up the concept plan, the, the most recent iteration. This was submitted after we had the packet published. Um, the difference between this plan and the one that's in the packet is simply the information provided on the left panel, which is proposed standards, which I'll, I'll discuss here in the report, but I just wanted to highlight that for you right away. So the applicant for this concept plan review is, his name is John Dobbs, he's working on behalf of Paul Brugman. The owner for this property, you may know, Chris Taylor. This property is located in the Headwaters Master PUD area. It is to the west of, um, currently the, what has been developed in the Headwaters area. The future land use designation for this property is low to medium density residential. The base zoning district in this area is the MXR one, which we're very familiar with, uh, which is the residential single-family and townhouse district. So as some background for the commission on this application, this parcel has, is part of the Headwaters Master PUD. The Headwaters Master PUD was approved by the city in two thousand and six initially. This particular property is roughly sixty acres in size. Actually says sixty-nine, so sixty-nine acres roughly. The proposal in front of the planning commission on this concept plan has one hundred and twenty-five single-family lots proposed for the property. The land use proposed for this development is exclusively as single-family homes. And that does appear to be consistent with the vision established by the Headwaters Master PUD for this area. So I'm gonna really quickly just jump over to the Headwaters PUD so that we're all on the same page with this. Uh, this is the cover page for a really big packet of information. Uh, but I'm gonna just go to the master plan here.
You want an original, I found one this weekend.
Have one, okay. It's hard to find. So this is the master plan for this area. Uh, this particular, if you're looking at the screen here and looking at the cursor, you can see the location roughly of, of this parcel. Uh, this area from the very get-go was guided for single-family land use. This is part of Phase Two for this PUD area. As the Headwaters Master PUD was established before two thousand and eight, uh, the conditions changed almost immediately after this was approved initially. So, uh, the phases that were established, part of Phase One and Phases Two and Three were put off by the developer at the time. So that's a little bit of the history. So I'm gonna go back to the plan here. So the Headwaters Master PUD established standards for single-family homes for this area. The standards are in the staff report that you've had the chance to review. The lot area, the minimum lot area for a traditional lot, the traditional single-family lot is seven thousand square feet with a minimum lot width of sixty-five feet wide. And, um, a front yard setback of twenty-five feet, a side yard setback on a corner property of twenty feet, a rear, a rear yard setback of twenty-five feet and setbacks for the side yard that differ depending on which side of the house you're on. Uh, if you're on the house side, the setback is ten feet. And if you're on the garage side, it's five feet. So those average out to about seven and a half feet typically. So the proposal by the developer roughly mirrors the standards that are established for this area. Uh, the developer in this, this plan that was, again, that was submitted to staff after we had published the report, does show a, a minimum lot size of seven thousand, consistent with the PUD. A minimum lot width of sixty-five feet is proposed, consistent with the PUD. Uh, front yard setback of twenty-five feet, a side yard setback on corner lots of twenty, a rear yard setback of thirty feet, which actually mirrors the MXR one district standard. And then the same side yard setbacks that are established in the Headwaters PUD. So, uh, meeting all of those standards that are in, in the Headwaters PUD for a traditional single-family lot. So appreciate the developer getting this updated plan to us so that we could, could do that review. Deviations beyond that which are provided in the Headwaters PUD would require the developer to go through a PUD process, but since they're not, doesn't, they don't appear to be, um, intensifying any of the deviations from, from the MXR one, they would not need to go through and amend the, the PUD or go through the PUD process over again. The density proposed for this development on gross acreage is two point zero eight units per acre. If you subtract in the plan that the developer provided, there are, there is a calculation for the amount of acreage of wetlands, which is estimated at fifteen point one eight acres. If you subtract that from the overall area, you get a, a density of two point two seven units per acre. So parkland dedication. Here you can see in this development a, a green, a green area here, I'm circling it with the cursor right now. Uh, that is approximately three acres in size and situated near a four-acre stormwater area, which is to the east on this concept plan. The developer is proposing trails. You can see here on the, on the screen, a concrete sidewalk is, is proposed here in red, which would run along at least one side of every street. Um, and a bituminous sidewalk is shown in green here. This, this, uh, this system of sidewalks would provide connectivity from Headwaters Parkway up to the trail system, which is north of this development. Uh, in summary, this does appear to be in line with the intent of the comprehensive plan for this, for this area. The city engineer was approached for comment on this and provided a memo that's attached to your report. Uh, staging of this development, I will defer to the developer. John Dobbs is here this evening and I'm sure would like to, to present his proposal here to you. Uh, staff recommend that you consider this concept plan and its conformity with the city's requirements and provide feedback to, to the developer. So with that, I'll, I'll hand it back to the chair and take any questions.
Any questions to Nathan? Mike?
Nathan, could you run the setbacks by again, the side setbacks?
Yes, absolutely. So the side yard setbacks for this Headwaters Master PUD are ten feet from the side yard to a house, to the portion of a building that's the house, and five feet from the portion of the building that's considered garage.
Now, are they, since we can't see it here, is it house on one side, garage on the other, then the next house would be garage and house? House, house, garage, garage?
I believe that, that's the, the idea is that there's.
Cause that's only fifteen feet then from house to house, or structure to structure.
At a minimum, it would have to be at least.
Seven and a half, okay. All right, thanks.
Well, to clarify that, as long as we're on this point, right in, on this page that you have up, it, it shows garage to garage being ten feet. Down and setback, under the setbacks? Or did they change that? Can you scroll up, please?
Yep. Looking at.
So it says right here, go up a couple more lines, says garage to garage, ten feet?
Yes.
So we know that the fire department is not gonna allow anything less than fifteen feet, so.
Between structures.
Between structures, so there, the garage to garage minimum needs to be fifteen, not ten.
Yes.
I, I know that Chief Newman is, that's his floor. He would prefer to see ten feet or twenty feet total.
Sure.
But, so just, I wanna make sure that, I don't know if the, this, if the developers here or if you're the developers for the next site, but I wanna make sure that's clear that there's gotta be fifteen feet between structures. Other questions to Nathan?
So they didn't, they didn't provide any information on building pad sizes, I saw that. Is there any indication of what they're, what they're looking for here?
Yeah, so building pad sizes are proposed on this plan to be fifty feet by fifty feet.
So that's twenty-five hundred square feet, so if you took five feet off of that, that would be twenty-two fifty. Fifty times two and a half.
Susan?
Nathan, I'm, I'm, I'm really confused because they're talking about the single-family lot with, the ones with rear, rear alleys and the single-family lot areas with rear alleys, but I don't see any alleys on this plan.
That, that is a good, uh, a good point. So the standards in this Master PUD allow for a number of different types of lots, but only one type of lot is being proposed here, it's the traditional single-family lot without a rear alley. So they're not proposing any rear alley lots on this concept.
So is it the traditional or the rear-loaded, single-family lot?
It's the single-family traditional.
All right, and there will be no townhomes?
That's what's shown here on the concept.
We get some really rough concepts, but this one's.
Real rough.
All right, so, uh, other questions to Nathan? Hearing none, is the developer, oh, Susan, I'm sorry.
Nathan, have they told you what is happening between lots twenty and twenty-one?
I believe that's a part of a wetland area, uh, you can see it on the screen here zoomed in. Um, I would defer to the developer on the decision for that area.
My, my last question for you, Nathan, if you go down to where the park starts, where the river walk is there, I think, that little sidewalk that goes in.
Talking about this thing here?
Mm-hmm, is that proposed to be part of the parkland? Or is that an easement over a property?
I think this, this area here is proposed to be part of the park area. Anything that's the lighter green color would be part of one of the lots.
I couldn't get it clear enough on my computer home to tell. All righty, thank you. So it would be part of the, they would walk on the park. It's the next one that's an easement.
But in, in practical reality, we know that's, that's just not going to happen. It's that, that Lot one sixteen is gonna go, decide they go all the way up to, I guess it's like a rolling river that they've got there in blue?
No, I'm thinking more like, yeah, that's the holding pond.
Uh, as far as I understand, just to kind of clarify what this blue color is, and I would have the developer give you a little bit more information, but this would be a, um, a swale to allow for water to drain into the wetland complex to the west.
So it's not a river walk?
When it's raining, it might be.
Well, and.
Heavy rain.
And, and basically what, what humans do is Lot one sixteen is gonna go and mow and, and assume that their property goes up to the edge of the swale. And I'm not sure, in terms of, of somebody taking, when the develop, I have questions when the developer comes.
Okay. I would be stunned if you didn't. Other questions to Nathan? And the developer is present? We ask you to come up and please state your name and address for the record. Uh, maybe spend a couple minutes giving an overall concept, how you think this is gonna fly and then I assume we will have plenty of comments and conversation with you.
Uh, good evening, my name is John Dobbs and I'm project manager for Hidden Creek Project. I work for Paul Brugman in the back. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, commissioners, and also I'll try to answer, I think I got most of the questions here. Um, so we have been working on this project, um, for about a year and a half now and, uh, it's a, it's an interesting piece of land. It kind of ends where the last phase of the PUD, and I actually have a copy of it as well. And, uh, it kind of hearkens back to my landscape architecture days at the University of Minnesota. And, um, and so we've kind of been working through that. Uh, there's also some, uh, the, the blue line through the middle is actually a judicial ditch by Rice Creek Watershed. Um, there's the existing Headwaters Parkway that ends a little bit short of this property. There is drain tile through and then a lot of wetlands. And so it's a pretty complex piece of property, we've kind of worked our way through it. The concept that you look at here is multiple iterations to try to get it to this point. And, uh, and then, so we thought, and, and after talking to Nathan and Donovan before him, the idea was to get in front of the planning commission, put it up to the best of our ability, get some feedback while we still had time before we do a preliminary plat summittal. And so that's kind of why we're here. We are in negotiations with the builder and there are some concepts of their home types in the, uh, summittal that you have. We haven't finalized that deal yet, but we asked them to give us, Dr. Horton, uh, asked them to give us some concept drawings and they did. So you have some idea of what the architecture looks like. And, uh, yeah, so I mean, I think that in general, that's kind of where we're at with the project. And so like I said, we've been working through a variety of different environmental factors as well as some transportation factors and some just connection factors to the existing subdivision, not only to the north, but also to the east. And I'll do my best to catch the questions that I just heard you guys talk about. And I'll do my best to catch the questions that I just heard you guys talk about. Uh, 2021, what's going on between those two lots is the wetland actually does come out and come back in again, which, um, when we're trying to line up the streets and make everything flow, uh, from a transportation point of view, there was just no way to, to do a lot there. It would have been filling wetland, and we're not filling wetland. So that's where that gap comes from. There's just a, a deline, the north part of the project has been delineated, and the delineation's been accepted by Rice Creek Watershed. And so that line that comes out, even though it's graphically, uh, fuzzy, could use the word, is actually a wetland, so that's why there's not lots there.
It doesn't pinch on Lot 20?
I'm sorry?
That wetland delineation with the, with the spackled area doesn't pinch on Lot 20?
Uh, a little bit. And, um, so we're kind of working through the final details of, um, in the preliminary plat of a grading plan, and how do we, you know, the horizontal and vertical road profiles? So we have to connect to the north, and we have to get back down to the low spot, which is actually the blue between the east and the west wetlands. And so we haven't worked all the grading plan out yet. So obviously, when we do do that, we'll have to come up with the minimum square footage and the setbacks and all the other things that go with it. I understand that. Did I answer your question about 2021?
It, it will affect the buildability of, of Lot 20.
Depending on where the line is?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're gonna work through that.
I'm coming to variance on that, dude.
I, I, I have a sense that you have a good memory for things like this. I do too, so we'll, we'll cross that bridge when I actually get a preliminary plat. It is all single-family, there are no townhouses, and there are traditional, uh, garages on the front. And, um, let's see, uh, the trail, we were just, you guys were just discussing, uh, the east-west connection trail on the north side. It is a concept, from my point of view anyway, there's a number of things to work out. It looks very geometric. Water, parkland, very rarely looks geometric. So I began to do some rough sketches. I actually was in front of the park commission about four months ago, maybe a little longer than that. Uh, we had a pretty good dialogue of what the parks commission was looking for. They talked about some of the problems that they were experiencing historically in the park, so kind of remember that part, gonna work my way through it. We don't like the trail being on the north side of the water feature in this concept, but it's really a pipe under the ground, the judicial ditch is actually an enclosed pipe. There is some discussion about the city taking over the judicial ditch. The city has some concerns about that, Rice Creek Watershed has some concerns about that. We're kind of sitting on the sidelines watching this play out. But at the moment, it's actually a pipe in the ground, so we're showing it as blue, but it's really kind of open space. If it does end up as any kind of an obstruction, we're gonna put a bridge across it of some kind. Either a pipe so that the trail from the north can get to the park on the south, or maybe some kind of a bridge or something pedestrian so that people can actually utilize it. Uh, it does make a lot of sense to have a park in the heart of your neighborhood and not have people be able to get to it from all aspects of the neighborhood, whether you're on the north side, the south side, the east side, or the west side. So that'll be one of our goals. Uh, there was some discussion about 15 feet between units, I heard that. Just typically, FYI, typically, the garage is on the high side of the lot, so streets rarely are flat, they usually climb up or climb down, and in this site, they certainly will. So the garage is on the high side, so you're not gonna get a lot of garage, garage next to each other. You might down to the low spots, but that being said, we'll make sure they're all at least 15 feet apart. And that was, I think, what I had for notes. Did I miss anybody's comments or questions that Nathan couldn't answer?
No, but, but I do have a question, but not Nathan's.
Go ahead, Mike.
You know, since, since you brought up that, I had it in my notes here to check, uh, on the north side of that, well, here it looks like a little, uh, uh, stream or whatever, but that ditch. I know you, and you just mentioned it, but maybe putting that on the south side, because that way, everybody from the north on both sides can come down and go to the big park, rather than come down, cross over, and then come across, and then back to the park. It would just, to me, it would make more sense having that trail on the south side.
I agree 100%, Commissioner. You know, like I said, one of the things that we're kind of on the outside watching at the moment is the discussion between the city and Rice Creek Watershed about how this, uh, what this slice of land is really gonna look like. But I can tell you from my seat anyway, the idea of having a park in the middle of a neighborhood, the flow, both pedestrian-wise as well as transportation-wise, needs to be there. And I see them as kind of the heart of a neighborhood. And, uh, um, so it doesn't do a lot of good to have clogged arteries in your heart, right? So I'm with you, great suggestion.
Dennis?
So the, the horizontal piece of land that's north of the, there, is that part of the park then as well there?
There's a, um, I, I'll do my best, I'm not a civil, but, um, there is a bounce in the pond and between the wetland on the east side and the wetland on the west side, that if there was a flood, would allow the water to transition from east to west. The wetland actually on the east side, on the right side, actually goes up into the neighborhood and comes back down again on the west side of this project. So there's a, a bounce factor where the, uh, where the water could top over, and that, that's why there aren't any lots there as well. It'd be a low spot in the street, and then that would allow the water to overflow to the west side, and then that wetland on the west is huge, and that's actually where the drainage pattern really goes. So it's a, it's not park, um, it would be open space. Yeah, it's part of the, it's part of the stormwater?
Yeah.
Bounce system? But that being said, it, it's open space, so it would be good to have it at least somewhat programmed, so at least if it's sitting there, it could be used on some level. Whether technically it would be park or not, probably not, it would be stormwater.
Susan?
Okay, I'm looking at the green. And are you intending that the horizontal green is the entrance to the park? For all those folks to the north? And if so, then you're gonna need some sort of a bridge or something, because you're on, otherwise you go, you've got a swale there, you, you've got it, you go down the swale, up the swale, and there's no real way of getting into that park area with a stroller, or a bike, or a big wheel, or whatever. Somebody would, would come in. I don't see how you're, you're entering that. I guess I also don't see that, that little sliver that is, that backs on 116, 93, 92, and 62, how anybody's gonna get in there, assuming from the city, to maintain it? Cut the grass, et cetera? And then that, again, where you're backing up to 116, 118 through 125, from a public works standpoint, that's a bear to maintain. And again, I'm gonna also say that 117 is not going to believe that they don't own all the way up to the edge of the ditch. I mean, they're, I mean, it's, unless somebody's fencing it, or what? Humans, we're, we're dealing with humans. What, what is the thought on the east side of 36 through 48? Is that to be maintained land, or is that to be, the backyards of those properties will sort of fade into the wetland?
I, I'm sorry, on the east side, where?
Yeah, it's, it's 36, 37, 38, 39.
The northeast corner.
Yeah, 43 to 48. There's that, that, it's this curve that comes through.
Well, there, um, it would be, uh, so there's a wetland buffer that Rice Creek Watershed has. And, um, and then it would just be open space adjacent to the addition, the, uh, the wetland, which is the graphic that is, uh, the dotted graphic, which is the delineated wetland.
Cause my concern is that folks are gonna say, well, that's, you know, I, I live in 37, and I really want my, my big garden, and we're gonna put the place structure in that area because it looks like it's, it's mine, but it's really supposed to be wetland buffer. And, um, I, yes, this is, this is a challenge, and y'all have done great. It's a challenging property. But I just see some, some future challenges in terms of what's public, what's not, what's, what's buildable, what's not. Y'all are gonna leave, and then the city's gonna have to figure out how to deal with encroachments maintaining the, the wetlands that are, that are there so that they function as wetlands. And I'm not sure how we get in there, to be real honest.
Well, there's a, um, in terms of delineation itself, I just actually went through this on a small project in Blaine. There's an easement, uh, perpetual easement given to Rice Creek Watershed, and then you have to sign them. And there's little, um, signs like this that are every hundred feet, or every, um, angle of a property line on a post that marks it and perpetually marks it all the way along. And then Rice Creek Watershed itself actually has a couple people who are responsible for, um, making sure that people don't come put swing sets and things like that, cause they've had, I've talked to Patrick and Terrence over at Rice Creek Watershed a few times about this, and they've had some real issues with that. And so, um, as my understanding is, that's how they want it delineated when it, when the setback itself gets finalized. There's also a process that we would have, we will have to go through about where the wetland is, where the setback is, and how to maneuver that line from their point of view and from our point of view to make the project itself work. So where the final line is, um, will be some, will be subject to their final review, but the signs is how they actually delineate the edge. And it says, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of one, but it says, you know, this is wetland permit easement, no spraying, no grass cutting, no, right.
And you put those signs up as part of the development?
Yeah, and, and they come out and, uh, Rice Creek Watershed comes out and reviews that they're in the correct spot before they will consider the permit complete.
Sorry, Chair, I have a question.
Yes?
Has that buffer been, the location of that anticipated buffer been delineated yet?
No, it has not. So the process is, it used to be, the process was 50 feet, period. Then they, Rice Creek Watershed has amended that, and I, I don't wanna say I know it perfectly, but having lived through it in Blaine a little bit. And then what the final version is, is they, they, Rice Creek Watershed see setback areas as more critical than others. So where it's really flat, for example, then they're not as concerned about water rushing in, or perhaps they are at the end of a slope. And so there's, it can meander. It's never, it's not gonna be 50 feet. Some places it'll be 15, some of them might be zero, some of them might be 100.
Yeah, I guess what I was wondering with that question is, you know, maybe, did, have you, do you know how that will impact the, the property lines on this lot?
Well, that's why we've done the concept the way we've are, is to pull it back enough that we have room to do that, um, depending on what the final delineation is, which I'll show the, uh, finals, uh, ruling is from Rice Creek Watershed. But also goes to grading. From the east and the west side up to the top is, uh, highest point is, I'm gonna take a guess, but I'm gonna call it 30 feet. So there's actually a fair amount of fall, and so we kind of have to balance the dirt, make the streets work, and then there's all the civil engineering that goes into all of that of, you gotta make sure that the wa, snow gets plowed and all the, so it's balancing act. So we've left enough room to be able to maneuver.
Other questions, comments from the developer? I have one, uh, let's go back to the park for me, you said you've already met with the park?
Uh, informally, or I, I don't know if it was a formal, but yes, I was with them through Zoom about four.
Yeah, that, that would have been on a previous iteration of this, um, plan. I think you probably had the same size and location of park, and that you would have, yeah, you would have worked with them in the spring of this year.
Yes, and, uh, but we haven't been back since. We've cleaned this design up some, and we've changed some stuff, minor things, but nonetheless, I haven't been back there since then.
So, so my question is, as far as the input you got from the park commission is, were they acceptable, this small amount, smaller amount of park? I mean, we're looking at 10%, this looks closer to 5%. Were they accepting it, and are they expecting you to develop the park, or?
I can tell you what my memory of the dialogue was. But, uh, the three acres was, uh, originally there, they, the parks commission's request through Donovan. And so, uh, the, where, where it got left from my seat anyway was the three acres wouldn't take up all of the required 10%. So then it was some kind of a negotiation about a cash alternative for the extra acreage, or what Donovan and I were talking about was, um, and I talked to Nathan about this as well, is actually trying to improve the park and trying to, you know, do something that works for both parties, where the intent of the park ordinance gets met, and at the same time, we get the heart of the neighborhood built at the same time. But it was just a dialogue. There's no formal, formal, it's that I'm answering your question.
And, and I'm, and I'm okay with so far the conversation. I, I guess I just wanna make it clear that, um, we wanna back what the park wants, so if they have changes, you're likely gonna hear it from us also.
Absolutely. I'm waiting on that.
That's my only kinda, and how they do it, that's the parks.
Okay. Is it, uh, excuse me, ma'am, is it, um, if the parks department gives us the blessing, then I'm assuming planning commissioner, or do we come back here and have that dialogue again?
Well, we'll see you again on the preliminary plat. And that'll, there'll be any further discussion, but if, we usually keep our hands off at the parks. We just wanna make sure they get what they want.
I appreciate that.
Nathan?
Yeah, just so everyone's on the same page, 10% is the amount of land that has to be dedicated per the parkland dedication ordinance. In instances where the city accepts less than 10%, that remaining percentage that's not been dedicated would have to, would be cash in lieu. So there'd be a payment to the city in lieu of, of the land to be dedicated. Uh, in some circumstances, uh, the city may allow the developer to put improvements on the park that meet that value of the cash that they would have to pay, so.
Susan?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I, I am, I'm more confused now because I just remembered that there is, on south, where you've got your park, there are gonna be houses that are backing up to that. So I'm still not sure how anybody gets in to use any of the ground in this park, es- especially the ground down around the, the southern end, because-
Are they showing a sidewalk there, right at the south?
Goes right into there.
Right in one.
Which, which is, I, again, get this human thing, which is gonna be the, the side yard of somebody and two backyards of somebody else.
Right.
And-
Right, there would be, um, you know, it, it's graphically just shown as, as pedestrian sidewalk connection points, but I, I guess what I can just say again, ma'am, is, is that, um, my intent, once we can flush out some of the civil stuff in terms of grading and other things, is to actually kind of really drill down onto not only how does the parkland itself, which is a kind of an odd trapezoidal shape, but also the pond to the right, which is also a trapezoidal shape with a blue graphic in the middle of it. How does those, how do those actually work? How does this space work, how do the connection points work? And I will do a better job of presenting that to you so you can, but I, I totally understand what you're saying. Graphically, it doesn't look like things connect. I'm here to tell you, it will connect when we come back with preliminary plat.
Because again, you've got that wetland that is not park space.
Right, absolutely.
It, it is not usable as park space, it can't be mowed. And, and so I'm just trying to see how usable that will be and how accessible that will be.
In the center?
To the whole community.
To the, to, to the, yeah, to, to this community. I'm, I'm living up there in Lot 27, 28, 29, 30, and, and how am I getting into this park area unless I go all the way around to the west, come down the street, and come all the way down to the end?
You get right here.
Well, there's the green trail that's-
No, because see, you're on the, you're on the, you gotta, then you've gotta go down slope, across the-
He says he's gonna put something in there that's gonna allow them to walk into the park.
Yeah.
Your, your point is well-taken, Susan. There really is, that, right now, the whole eastern half of this thing isn't, doesn't show, there's no access for them into the park, except by looping around this whole thing.
Unless, unless you move it to the south side.
Right, or do a pedestrian bridge across. And yes, I, I hear your point clearly.
It will be something that as you move your plans forward, it would be appreciated to.
I will do a detail.
How, how the folks in the entire development are gonna use this area?
Absolutely.
The heart needs the arteries.
I'm sorry?
The heart needs the arteries.
We don't wanna have clogged arteries, and we won't. Sometimes I unfortunately don't have time to do anything but let my civil engineers design, and you get what you get. So, nothing personal. I'm sorry, council.
Mike, did you have a question?
No, it was pretty much, I was gonna say, you know, if you move that from the north side, that sidewalk to the south side, now people have complete access to the park, from either direction.
Yeah.
Yep.
But Sharon hit on that, so.
Other comments for the developer? Next time we'll see him as a preliminary, so if you're missing something here. I will tell you, I'm happy with the houses, that you have some front of the houses, and I just don't see a garage. I was really not hoping to see, or hoping not to see a little eight-foot narrow doorway and three-car garage. So you do have, kind of looks like a room to the left of, or the right of the door, so it gives us some streetscape, so I'm happy to see that.
Look nice.
Other comments? Any questions you have of us?
No, I genuinely appreciate your feedback, and the points are well taken. And I have homework now.
We appreciate you coming in. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Welcome back to Forest Light, Mr. Bergen.
Yeah, it's been a while. Item number eight is Shadow Creek Estates Concept Plan. Nathan, are you bringing us through on this?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chair. So a comment for you right away. This.
It ain't gonna work.
All right. I'm gonna go right to the concept plan here. Cut to the chase. So this concept plan for Shadow Creek, this is, the developer has submitted since the staff report was published, a new concept plan that we have not had time to review, but I will show it to you. This concept plan on the screen is what you've seen in the packet. And you'll know from the packet that there's a variety of land uses proposed here. And our developer is actually not here this evening, so Chair, I would defer to how you would like to handle this. It may make sense to table this item until the December meeting, to give staff time to review the new concept and to ensure the developer is here to receive your feedback. I just want to give you a brief overview of what, where we're at right now. So this concept on the, on the screen is what we have received since the publication of the packet. So, again, we haven't had time to review for things like access and other potential land use considerations that are presented by this development, so. I'm happy to give you a little bit more information now, or Chair, if you prefer that this item be tabled until the next meeting, that might be.
I think, I think we could take a little information primarily for you.
Sure.
To know just initially if there's anything that really jumps out at us, to make sure you cover it before the developer spends a lot of time and effort refining a plan that isn't gonna fly.
And the developer has the letter from Washington County.
The developer does have the letter.
That says not only no, but heck no.
Yes, we have a meeting scheduled with Washington County, the developer and city engineering staff, to sort through that comment and work, work, work through the access considerations for the site, because there are, there are some definite access considerations. On that note, this site is located at the northeast corner of a kind road and a state highway. So, the access is an important issue for the site. Not only the proposed single-family lots, of which there are fifty-eight, but also Outlot B here, which is proposed to contain a high-density residential land use. So, lot going on here with access and land uses. But I'll give you, I'll kind of continue this overview for you. So the applicant is Todd Christensen. He's a developer, looking to purchase two parcels that constitute this entire site. On this, he wants to have a, kind of a range of land uses. From left to right or west to east, you're looking at high-density residential in Outlot B, which would run along Highway sixty-one. Then you have some single-family homes proposed here, in sort of the center of this site, running to the northeast corner. And then in the southeast corner of this site, you have a little bit more of a rural residential style land use here, with the applicant proposing to actually live on this, this Outlot C, and have horses and kind of a hobby farm. So, that's what is, that's what's been presented to staff as, as the proposal here for land uses on this site. As far as we understand them, we do think that there will be deviations required to accomplish the, specifically with respect to the single-family lots. If you're looking at a comparison to MXR-1 zoning, you would expect to need deviations from lot area setbacks and the lot mix, which is required to be. There's a proposal of villa lots to constitute a hundred percent of this development. So these are not only single-family lots, they're villa lots, which are smaller. Okay. Getting a lot of nods. Proposed density, as far as we know, is about one point eight units per acre. Obviously, that will change when we learn what's going on with the high-density residential. So when the high-density.
Villa lots are more than one point two per.
Yeah, so this, this, yeah, that's a good point. This density number is looking at the single-family villa lots plus Outlot C. Not including Outlot B. So there's a lot of information we don't.
It's hard for the law of averages.
Yes, we don't really have as much information as we would like to calculate density, but we will hopefully. There are requirements for, for keeping livestock in the city, and for horses, you have to have at least two acres of grazable land per horse. So that's something to be aware of for Outlot C.
Per horse.
There's, there's calculations for every, a bunch of different animals, so if you have questions on what kind of animals and.
We've been down there, Rod.
I'm sure you have. Okay, consistently with the comprehensive plan, this, this proposal is frankly not very in line with the future land uses for this area. So, in terms of steps for the developer, they're gonna have to go through some amendments, both to the comprehensive plan, and they will probably have to do some rezoning as well for this site.
Request amendments and request rezoning.
Thank you for the distinction. They will have to request them, yes.
And they will. I'm not a fan of spot zoning, so it should be similar or the same as the adjacent, and. So I don't want to see ag come in here for this outlot, if that makes sense. You know, usually when I'm in favor of potential comprehensive plan change, it's similar to the adjoining areas and not a spot zone. Not been looked favorably to spot zone. You're gonna love this plan. So, as long as you're educating us, so where is exactly Outlot D? Just kind of on the back of all these houses that he wants to keep?
Yeah, so Outlot B, if you're looking at the screen in the cursor, is right here, so.
That's for the apartment.
This is B, this is high-density residential, or what will be proposed for that. Outlot C.
That's it, it's that whole dotted area. I mean, that's how I read that.
Well, that's how I'm thinking, but I. It's Outlot O maybe, or C?
Is this, this is a proposal, this isn't.
This is a concept plan.
Yeah, so this isn't divided, there's, this is just two parcels now, right?
Currently, yeah, this site is two parcels that have different zoning designations, and.
And what are they? What are those zoning designations?
The zoning designation, actually, sorry, there's, there's one zoning district for these two parcels, and that would be multiple family. There are two future land use designations. The parcel that is. Sorry for the confusion here. The parcel that is in the east, sorry, the east parcel here, that is your high-density residential. The west parcel is guided for mixed-use development, and that's sort of in line with its, its location on that corridor.
On sixty-one.
Yes, exactly. So having.
So is that me, so is it, so how is it zoned right now then?
Mixed use.
Mixed, uh, multiple family.
That's what I thought I heard, that's why I thought.
The east part is multi-family. The west part, if I remember right, is mixed use, because we were looking for some retail commercial on that corner, because the corner to the south is, was planned for Stop and Rob, uh, uh, Quick Trip, um, um, gas station.
Okay. Oh, so, so we're looking at the current zoning map for the city. This orange color is multiple family, and I'm gonna zoom in on the parcel here. If you're looking at the cursor.
Yep.
These are, this is the current zoning designation for these two parcels.
So they are guided the same?
They're guided, so their zoning district is the same, they're guided differently.
Okay, I had it backwards. They're zoned the same, but they're guided differently.
Yes. Any other questions on?
So, what do you, I mean, do we have any idea what he was thinking here with this Outlot C? Did you talk about phasing of the development or anything?
We haven't received any information on phasing to date. We'll be looking for more information like that, in addition to learning a little bit more about the proposed land use for this sort of rural residential. I think the intent is to keep the, kind of the farmhouse complex area as his and his wife's home for a period of time, and then that would be sold and developed as additional single-family lots. So that's what was represented.
The equestrian entity is temporary, or sort of.
That's how it was relayed to me.
An interabuse.
I can talk about Parkland dedication, that's kind of a unique one for this specific development, so. Parkland dedication for this, it's been recommended to staff, the planning staff by park staff, that for this development specifically, Parkland dedication be accepted as cash in lieu. The reason being is that you have a park directly abutting this development to the north that could use some additional improvement. So the, the funding coming from Parkland dedication for this could fund improvement of the park to the north.
And there, and your, and his narrative, it says there'll be an easement into the park. I would expect that there would be park land into the park.
Between ten and all, or.
Yeah, so the question with an easement, there would be a proposed easement to accommodate a trail that would connect this residential development with that Southview Park.
To, my commissioner, to the right point earlier on the concept, owning it's much better than easing it. Ideally, I'd like to see a whole lot dedicated. That park to the north is pretty big. It'd be nice if you.
Weird shaped, but it's pretty big.
Well, yeah, I remember when that project came through, but it'd be nice to have, similar, we're talking in the previous concept, enough area that we know that it's paved and it's actual parkland, and people don't feel that they're trespassing.
Right. And I think you were there when we had, during an election plan, or during election time, we tried to hit all of the parks. And that was, that was a challenge, because everybody kept saying, I don't know where it is, I don't know where it is.
There's a parking lot on the north side of this park, correct?
Of Southview?
This is where all the kids used to go back and drink.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
I was reading some of the comments here on the park, and, yeah, like, how do I get here? I wasn't sure I could drive there.
They have the dirt driveway.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I think there's an access to Southview Park if you're looking at the screen in the cursor up off of Georgia Avenue.
Yeah, there is there, yeah.
I don't know what it looks like now, it's been mowed by the neighbors.
It's a dirt, it's a dirt driveway like.
It's two tracks.
It's good.
I'm afraid that the folks that are living up there on Georgia, who are hoping to have horse farm forever, are going to be very disappointed. But what is the plan or the thought for that cutout that's really a, pretty much a wetland? They've been trying to crop it for years, but it's really a wetland, and there are, there's tile under it.
Are you referring to this area here?
Top, top left.
Top left.
This area.
The cutout, yeah. Help me, Mike, please.
That and north of it, that, that big spot, just, just to the left of the rental facility. Scroll, scroll your map down a little bit, yeah, right where your cursor is. No, bring it down, bring it down the other way. No, 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 your cursor, bring it up. There you go.
Am I doing okay?
It says exception.
It's a map reading.
Yeah, where it says exception.
Exception, right there, you got it.
Gotcha.
What's the plan on that?
They've got drain tile in there.
Yeah, there's, there's drain tile, a lot of drain tile in there, and.
Made part of the colors.
You mess around with that, it's, it's. There's been a lot of money spent on that, and Mid-Not has had real water issues on sixty-one from that area.
Yeah, I can't speak to this parcel, that is the exception on, on, on this concept plan, but I know that, to your point about wetlands being challenging in this particular part of the site, we have, you know, I've talked with Ryan Goodman, city engineer, about the challenge for Lot twenty-one. And whether, whether Lot twenty-one is a single-family lot, or villa lot, or an apartment. Anything developed there will be challenging.
And this is also in the airport overlay district?
Yep.
Yes.
So it must, the reason for that kind of unusual layout there at the north end of that of Lot B must be because he was planning on access from the cul-de-sac into that larger.
Yeah, that.
Why else would you do that?
There will be comments from, and I think this, the city engineers com, has provided some comments that are in this report as well, but there will be some comments to the effect of not, not providing access through a cul-de-sac and actually needing to provide access through, perhaps removing some of the lots towards the south of the site. So, that, that is still, the access to Outlot B and just the access for the site in total are still very, we're still working through the considerations for access.
I guess I would, I would really recommend that if he's gonna do this, he should come in there off a good view, and not even try to do the accesses off Two Hundred and Second. I mean, that, that, that intersection gets really ugly, especially around school in and out time. I know that Washington County is planning on putting bike trail access along Two Hundred and Second, and they're gonna be doing a, a big redo of that County Road fifty, as part of their capital planning.
That cul-de-sac's gonna be way too long then. Maybe not, I don't know. So we would expect to have the developer here next time, and you'll have probably an answer from Washington County and some of those things.
Yes, so we do have a meeting scheduled with Washington County. We're hoping to get some of our questions answered at that point. We'll also have had more time to work with the developer on, on other comments that we have on the concept plan that was recently, very recently submitted, so. In addition, we can grab information on staging of the development, if the developer has that available to us. And then, yeah, just to kind of recap on, on next steps for this project, project after we get through this next meeting for concept plan review, looking at requests for comp plan amendment, requests for rezoning as they're identified. And then you'd have to go through your standard preliminary plat and PUD, and, and final preliminary plat and PUD, so.
Any other comments for Nathan? Hearing none, I motion to table this concept plan review until a date satisfactory to both the applicant and the city.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, it's not debatable. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all for your comments. We have moved to the most exciting part of the meeting, to our other, and we are honored tonight to have our esteemed councilperson, Munson. to have our esteemed councilperson Munson here. Do you have anything you'd like to tell us this evening?
I do, I have one, um, update for you. Uh, so on Monday, this, this past Monday, the resolution for Piper's Preserve was, um, in front of us, which we did pass, um, but we did amend the resolution, so you know, um, there was a lot of, around the woodland preservation. There was a lot of concern from council members of having that in there and approving it, and so with guidance from the city attorney, we pulled that out, and I want you to know that Mayor Bain, we, we all made a big issue of planting those trees, and, um, I would say got a little mini lecture from Mayor Bain on that. Um, I think that's... Is there anything else?
That was the main recap for, for that item, yeah.
Yeah, yep. So there was a lot of discussion.
What does it mean that you pulled it out? I mean, is it just...
We, we, it's, it's a separate issue. The way the city attorney explained it to us is it's a separate issue, um, not related to the vote that was on Monday night, and so it was just easier, I think, for council members to vote and approve it with that issue taken out, but that issue still has, but that issue still has to be addressed. It doesn't really...
Oh, some kind of separate submittal then, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I can, yeah, that's essentially correct.
He, the, they did try to get some guidance from the council on, uh, trees, and we explained that we were not the planning commission, and we don't give guidance on those things. And to bring it to contact staff, um...
Trees that weren't trees.
It was about the, the trees and the bushes, yep. So, and then, um, Mayor Bain just reminded them as well that they have a letter of credit with the city and that we will follow through, so.
Questions of our councilperson? Thank you for attending this evening.
Welcome.
Karen, do you have anything?
I have nothing to add.
Nathan?
Uh, nothing to add. The other minor subdivision request was also approved, just so you're aware. That was for 880 18th Street.
And we have a meeting in, no meeting at the end of the month here, but we have one in December, correct?
Correct.
Franny, do you have anything to add this evening?
I'll see you all next month.
All right.
Franny will be presenting a couple of staff reports to you on, on some applications that we've received, so. We will have our work cut out for us at the December meeting, so.
Susan makes homemade cookies. Maybe she'll bring some in.
I could be persuaded.
Maybe I'll make some.
Oh, I make a killer brownie.
I just, you make really good brownies.
Start down at the fire. Mike, anything to add?
Uh, I've got nothing.
Dennis?
Nope.
Susan?
How's the budget process coming?
I'm sorry?
How's the budget process coming?
Um, it's coming along. We had another, um, uh, sort of discussion on it on Monday around bonding, um, and to bring the, everyone looks at the levy to bring, it was brought down further with, um, some bonding. We have more, more discussion to have on that of what that looks like. We don't know, um, all the details, but just some more concepts that their commissioner, uh, our commissioner, Administrator Casey, brought, brought to us. So we're working to get it in the right direction for everyone.
Anything else, Susan? Geneva?
Nope.
Justin? Kevin?
I think the good news is, uh, we have lots of, uh, people, developers and builders that want to build in our community. I think that's a great thing. Hopefully, we can incentivize some businesses and, uh, maybe some, uh, restaurants and shops to come to town now because, uh, we certainly are getting a lot of nice new development.
I did, um, hear that at the next EDA meeting, there's gonna be a, um, presentation of a, of a draft plan of the downtown plan, so. If you're interested.
Uh, my only comment is, I wish everyone, uh, happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. Enjoy the holidays, and we'll see you in December. And on that note, the chair's looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, it's an unadmissible. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all very much.